This is why I always have to wait.
It's okay.
No, over here. You see, it's just... You gotta be kidding me. Where is that stupid mouse? Stream key. Livestream, stream URL.
We don't have any public comment.
I did not receive anything.
Can I say something unofficially before we get started? No. I hope so. I'm dying to hear it.
That brought you back.
Meeting of the Taral City Council is ordered 6:00 PM Thursday, September 3rd, 2020. Just to let the public know, we are broadcasting this live via the city's YouTube channel in the spirit of transparency. With that said, we will begin our meeting with a moment of silence and a pledge of allegiance led by councilperson Bowlen.
I pledge allegiance to this flag, the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. It's a little more difficult this way, but we did it. Thank you. Roll call, please.
Councilperson Aller.
President.
Councilperson Azar.
Present.
Councilperson Bowlen.
Present.
Here. Councilperson Crossen.
Present.
Councilperson Devon.
Here.
Councilperson Elliott. One moment, please.
Hold on.
We are taking attendance, Councilperson Elliott.
Present.
Councilperson Garrison.
Here.
Councilperson Loudermilk.
Here.
Councilperson Nation.
Here.
All are present.
Thank you. We have not received any public comment, so at this point in time, we'll go to correction of the journal.
There are none.
Communications from the mayor.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President, members of the council. I wanted to give you an update on a few financial related things. I'll be as brief as I can, but I wanted to give you a chance to ask any questions, too. Wanted to talk about the budget first. We advertised the budget last Friday officially, put it on Gateway, and you all have access to Form 1, Form 2, and the 4Bs now. Michelle, I believe you've posted those. Is that correct?
I finished posting today. That is correct.
So the Form 4Bs are also there for your perusal. And then this afternoon, I also sent you a budget comparison, 2020 versus 2021, that you typically get. So you'll be able to look and see what the differences are in the budget much quicker than trying to figure that out on your own. Right now, I would say, things look pretty good with this budget. You know, we've had to make some reductions based on anticipated revenue reductions. So a few expenses are up, and we'll discuss that in more detail later, but we've got a balanced budget right now. We'll just have to wait and see what updates we get regarding revenues before we meet on the third week of September to have that budget discussion. So I'll prepare some additional materials for that night, and we'll see if we have any changes. And then, so yeah, just let me know if any of you have any questions about the budget along the way here versus waiting and doing them all at the same time. Feel free to reach out at any time. The second item I have is the State Board of Accounts audit for 2019 started last week, and they anticipate being done by the end of this month. So basically, a little over a month-long process. We've had some challenges with one of our consultants having some personal issues, significant ones, and slow to stand a little bit on a few things, but we were able to recover from that and get caught back up to where the State Board of Accounts wants us to be with all the different pieces that were required for us to be delivered to them. So I'm feeling really good about that. They have a conference call every couple, two or three days, and it's been going very well on the conference call. So anticipate a good review at the end of this process. I wanted to touch on the CARES Act funding. We have access to three different pools of money. I know some of this has been an immediate, but I kind of wanted to bring it together here. The first one is the relief reimbursement fund from the state, and our allocation is over $1.9 million. And we have started to seek reimbursement now. We have until the end of the year to do that. We were trying to make sure we were following the right procedures. They come out with some new guidance, and so now we're following the new guidance, and we're submitting receipts. So hopefully, we'll begin to get some funds returned on those expenses we've already made. The second one is the Community Development Block Grant, coronavirus allocation of 902,000 to come through the Department of Redevelopment. Most of you probably read the stories on that, where we're going to be dividing that up between Union Hospital for their COVID-related community services, Reach Services for a homeless day drop-in center, some funds to Catholic charities, Hamilton Center, and the Wabash Valley Health. And then the third one is a transit grant we've received of a little over $4 million. We're going to be purchasing eight new buses. It will assist us with operating costs and a variety of things related to COVID and impacts we've had on our transit system. So those two grants, those second two, work a little differently than the first one. The first one isn't a reimbursement for money you've already spent. These other two are more like grants where we will get reimbursed as we go, but there'll be different stages of time where we will be submitting requests for funds through those two grants. Wanted just to touch on briefly the sanitary bond we refinanced recently. I'm going to be putting out a press release on this with very specific details, just to let you know it closed last week. Our bond rating went up. We're going to save quite a bit of money in interest. It's the same period of time the original bond was for, but with interest rates so low, it makes sense to do that, and we paid off the bond intent with the county last week. No longer owe them any funds. So I'll be putting out more specific information that very soon through media release. Sewage billing, I wanted to touch on that just for a second. Most of you probably saw through the media that we implemented a program for people to be able to put six months on their delinquent bills. We sent those letters out to 1,000 of our users who had $125 or more in delinquent bills, which was a total of about $280,000 roughly of outstanding money over the 125. We've got some other outstanding money that's under that, but those are the ones that were over $125. You know, some of them are 1,000 or a few thousand, but a lot of them are just in the hundreds. And so they are required to sign an agreement and send that back to us. We're starting to get some of those in. I'm not sure how many people are going to take advantage of that yet, so we are not doing disconnects, and we're not doing liens right now, but we will soon be starting those two things up. We just want to work through this delinquent list and give them every opportunity to get on a, you know, payback program. So any question about any of those things before I touch on the last one?
Council?
That's good.
Just a quick... Councilperson Crossen.
I'm sorry.
Mayor, I just had a quick question about the buses. Are some of those new buses replacement buses, or...
They'll all be replacement buses. So we're going to get three this year, three this year, and five next year. They reached, those five reached the end of their federal life next year, and so they've authorized eight new buses. And they'll be a little bit different design than what we have to be able to help deal with this coronavirus or some future thing like this.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions for the mayor?
All right.
Okay, Mayor, go ahead and continue.
All right, so last thing, just a quick update on the THPD building. Councilman Nation asked me to provide an update tonight. I guess the first thing I would say is that, you know, we've been working on this for quite some time. We've had some challenges with the coronavirus, the bond market, whatever, but we continue to work through this. I sent you all an update today. I don't know if you've had a chance to get it, and that's fine if you haven't. Hang on, I'm looking for mine. And basically, in that update, it just, I provided some basic information about the original project, the original project costs back in 2015, our current project description here in 2020. So what we're looking at for a difference between building a new building and acquiring a building and remodeling it. So both of those numbers are there for you to take a look at. Some of the key points I wanted to highlight was the new construction costs, basically taking that, looking at the old construction costs and updating them into current pricing, the market pricing, talking about the additional over 10,000 square feet of a building that we will be able to have in this scenario. The cost per square foot, obviously, is much smaller with this one. As I mentioned before, it'll shorten the construction and remodel time by about six or seven months. And then the last piece of that is the TIF consolidation. Next week, Jason Simler from Baker Tilly will be online, and so will Lisa Lee from Ice Miller, and they will walk you through the legal pieces of this process. And Jason will specifically talk about the advantages of consolidation of the TIFs and why that benefits us. And there's a whole bunch of reasons, but he will go over that in a PowerPoint presentation. You will get that presentation prior to the meeting. Hopefully, you'll have that by Tuesday or Wednesday when he completes it, but you'll have at least 24 hours ahead of the meeting to review. So that's kind of where we're at on that. So what happens next is, I'm hopeful that next week that you will approve the TIF consolidation. And then, once that happens, then we can actually go do the bond work. Because if you would choose not to go with the TIF consolidation, we got to do a little bit of a different financing route. So we're programmed right now, and we've been working on this one because it's the best scenario for the city, but if you would choose not to do that, then we would have to kind of go back and do a little bit of work to reposition it. And Jason will go through all those and the cost savings and a variety of things of why this is a good thing to do that way. So if you do approve it, that bond work will start the next day, and then the Redevelopment Commission will do the final confirmation on the TIF consolidation, and then we will have the bond closing as quick as we can. We believe that we can complete all of this by the end of October, give or take, a little bit, depending on how things shake out. So all the hard work has been done to prepare us for this point, and now we'll be bringing it to you to show you the building design, the individual costs, and all those things as we move forward here over the next week or two. So you have that. If you didn't get a chance to look at it, you'll find that memo with some numbers in it, and you'll also find the timetable that Lisa Lee put together. Now there's no dates in the timetable except for the first couple, because that'll be all dependent on whether you approve the consolidation next week or not. Then we'll plug in the dates. So any questions about that?
Anyone from the council have a question for the mayor? Councilperson Nation.
Mayor Bennett, thank you for updating us on all this, and it's the kind of information that I was hoping you'd provide. I appreciate it. One general question about the Tribune Star Building, the former Tribune Star Building as a site for the new police station. What do you have planned for the extra 10,000 square feet that, you know, that was above what we thought we needed for a new police station?
But I think there's three key things that I would point to. One was, we weren't going to be able to put code enforcement in the new construction building. There wasn't going to be room for them, especially with two more code enforcement officers now, so they will be able to have their own office space in there and not have to be moved back to City Hall. We were going to have to squeeze them in somewhere. Number two, there'll be much more training space. You know, we've got a training space, but we're going to be able to expand that to be even bigger. And then, the third piece would be additional evidence storage space in the basement. But we knew we were going to have more with this project, but we're going to be able to have plenty for many, many years to come, where we do get pretty tight on space. We're pretty much out right now where we're at, but it'll give us a lot more flexibility for meeting space and storage space and code enforcement. Those are the primary things, and we'll still have a little room to grow. We won't fill all that 10,000 square feet up, but it'll give us a lot more elbow room than we were trying to make the price of the new building fit within our budget, and so now we gain that, and still, the cost is not that much different.
Okay, thank you. That was my main question. I yield.
And I'll cover some of that more in detail in the future here.
Anyone else have a question for the mayor?
Mr.?
Councilperson Aller.
So when are we looking at, when everything gets finalized and everything gets done, what do you think a target date is for the actual move into there?
If, well, one of the things we're looking at with this bond is a bond anticipation note that'll be a part of this. We'll see what Lisa wants to present next week. If we're able to do that, that means we'll be able to start the construction, wait before we have to close on the bond, if you will. That's a pretty normal process. So if we're able to secure that bond anticipation note, which I don't anticipate any issue with going out and getting that, as long as you guys are willing to support that, we'd be able to get construction started in October and be in there in six to six and a half months, probably. I'll lay that more out. After next Thursday, I'll be able to tell you more of that specific timeline. Garmong's ready to go. There may be some things we can do ahead of time if we have your blessing, so we're going to be bringing that to you very soon.
Okay.
I yield. Anyone else? Councilperson Elliott.
Mayor, could you send me some information concerning the bond rating improvement?
Sure. Before the press release?
Oh, it's going to be in the press release? No, that's fine, if it's going to be in the press release.
Because I'm pretty proud of it. So yes, I'll share that with all of you.
No, you don't. That's fine, if that's, if that was going to be...
No, I'm pretty happy, so...
Okay, all right. David Hannan will be happy also, so.
Yeah, well, we'll get rated, we'll get rated for this bond, too, but I'm looking forward to that.
Okay, I yield.
Anyone else? Seeing or hearing none, we will move on to the next item.
Thank you.
Reports from city officials.
There are none.
Okay, at this point in time, because we inadvertently failed to put it on the last, the agenda of the last meeting, Councilperson Nation had asked me to with, or to accept his resignation from the Solid Waste Management Board, which I have done. And at that time, I had asked Councilperson Loudermilk to serve on that board, and I would like, at this time, to have a motion and a second to approve retroactively her appointment to that board.
Mr. President?
Councilperson Nation.
I move that we appoint Cheryl Loudermilk retroactively to the spot on the Solid Waste Management District Board, and thank you, Cheryl, for doing that.
Councilperson Allers, it's been moved by Councilperson Nation, seconded by Councilperson Aller, that we retroactively appoint Councilperson Loudermilk to the Solid Waste Management Board. Roll call, please.
Councilperson Aller.
Yes.
Councilperson Bowland.
Yes.
Councilperson Crossen.
She's gone. There she is.
Councilperson Crossen.
Yes.
Councilperson Devon.
Yes.
Councilperson Elliott.
Yes.
Councilperson Garrison.
Yes.
Councilperson Loudermilk.
Yes.
Councilperson Nation.
Yes.
Councilperson Azar.
Yes.
That's nine yes.
Thank you, and congratulations. Okay, next item. Reports from Board of Public Works and Safety.
I had none.
Standing committees.
I have nothing.
Non-standing committees.
I have nothing.
Items previously tabled.
There are none.
Tax abatements for confirmation.
There are none.
Items on second reading.
There are none.
Items on first reading.
We have something.
Okay.
Special Ordinance 10, 2020, rezoning a property located at 1322 South 11th Street, area plan, and gave a favorable recommendation. Please wait while I admit the individuals.
Can we blow on this tonight?
And if we can bear with them for a moment. Philip, can you hear me?
Yes, I can hear you now.
Okay, I need video, please. And is Jordan the, Jordan, where it says Jordan, is that Jeremy?
Jeremy. He is not able to make it now.
Okay, do you know who Jordan is?
Jordan? That would be the buyer.
Okay, so Jordan was coming in, too?
And as of last night, he was wanting to be a part of it, but I haven't heard from him today.
Okay, well, I have a Jordan trying to get in the meeting.
Okay, yeah, I didn't send him anything, so I don't know how he got in, but Jordan would be the buyer.
All right, so we have read the ordinance. If you just want to give a little background?
Okay. I'm representing, I'm Philip Boer. I'm a Realtor with Remax, representing Jeremy Hopkins. Jeremy and his wife bought this property 10 years ago. They have used it as a single-family residence for the past 10 years, and there, we've got a pending purchase agreement on it right now. Through the process of going through appraisal, the appraiser found out that it was actually Zon C2. Doing some research there, found out that it had been rezoned C2 commercial somewhere back in July of 1999. So it had been missed over the years, because obviously, the Hopkins has a mortgage on it, but in order to proceed with their mortgage, we have to have it rezoned as an R1, and current buyers are going to use it as a single-family residence as well. So that is their intent.
Okay, thank you. Questions or comments from the council?
Mr. President, just a reminder, Special Ordinance 10 and Special Ordinance 11 will need to have a vote to take action.
Okay. Everybody hear that? We will need to vote to take action on this tonight. Are there any questions from the council?
Mr. President?
Councilperson Aller.
If there's no further questions, I move that we vote to vote on Special Ordinance 10, 2020.
Second.
Been moved by Councilperson Aller, seconded by Councilperson Bowland, that we vote to take action on Special Ordinance 10, 2020. Roll call.
Councilperson Aller.
Yes.
Councilperson Bowland.
Yes.
Councilperson Crossen.
Yes.
Councilperson Devon.
Yes.
Councilperson Elliott.
Yes.
Councilperson Garrison.
Yes.
Councilperson Loudermilk.
Yes.
Councilperson Nation.
Yes.
Councilperson Azar.
Yes.
That's nine yes.
Okay. Do I have a motion for adoption?
Mr. President?
Councilperson Aller.
There's no further questions. I move that we approve Special Ordinance 10, 2020, as presented.
Second.
Been moved by Councilperson Aller, seconded by Councilperson Bowland, that we approve Special Ordinance 10, 2020, as presented. Roll call.
Councilperson Aller.
Yes.
Councilperson Bowland.
Yes.
Councilperson Crossen.
Yes.
Councilperson Devon.
Yes.
Councilperson Elliott.
Yes.
Councilperson Garrison.
Yes.
Councilperson Loudermilk.
Yes.
Councilperson Nation.
Yes.
Councilperson Azar.
Yes.
That's nine yes.
Special Ordinance 10 has been passed. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next item.
Special Ordinance 11, 2020, rezoning of property located at 4701 Margaret Avenue. Area planning gave a favorable recommendation.
Okay, anyone here to speak on this?
The attorney and the petitioner are coming in.
Okay.
There we are. We have Mr. Collins and Mr. Britton.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay, whoever wants to start. Lou will.
Hello.
Go ahead, Lou.
Good evening. I hope everyone's doing well. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay.
I want to thank Michelle for her technical wizardry here. You should also know that she helps the Redevelopment Commission out with their Zoom meetings and is able to pull those off without a hitch. I don't have any idea how she does that, but in any event, she does. Also, here with me this evening is Wayne Collins, representing the petitioner, and Jordan Marvel, who's a new associate in our office, is supposed to be here, but I don't see him, so maybe we're at capacity.
I'm trying to admit then that they're not bringing up video.
Oh, okay. Well, you got my pretty face, so you're doing okay.
What do we need?
This is a petition by Gerald Wayne Collins Enterprise LLC to rezone the property at 4701 Margaret Avenue from 01 Open Space to C2 Community Commerce. The purpose is to allow Mr. Collins to lease that property to Unlocking the Spectrum, which is an organization that provides therapeutic services to autistic children. At the back of the package of materials that you should have, there's a page that describes in more detail their methods of operating, but basically, they, they provide one-on-one services. Oh, Jordan has joined us now, so you've got another pretty face. They provide one-on-one therapeutic services to autistic children. The project, or the rezoning, received a unanimous favorable recommendation from area plan at their meeting last night. The project itself will involve the remodeling of about 4,500 square feet of warehouse space into offices, which will be added to the existing 4,000 square feet of offices that already exist in that building. The facility will also include a large indoor play area and a large outdoor fenced play area for the, for the children. The building itself, to orient you a bit, is located on Margaret Avenue, immediately east of the Tribune Star Printing Facility, west of the Koning Scale Facility, and south across Margaret Avenue from the Klaver Girl Warehouse. So it's surrounded by commercial uses. It's bounded on the south by Interstate 70. The building itself formerly housed the operations of Lamar Advertising, also sometimes known as WhiteCo. If there are any questions, I'll be happy to answer. If I can't, I'm sure that Wayne can.
Do we have any questions or comments from the council? Councilperson Cross?
Yeah, Lou, either you or Mr. Collins. I'm just curious about this use. It sounds like a really good service. Are these day services for the children, and about how many children will be served there?
It is day service, and right now, I think they have, I'm not sure the exact number they have, but they got a 20, waiting, a list of 20 that wants to get into the program as soon as we get open.
Okay.
They have a current, they have a current billing that you're using down South 4th Street, right behind where it used to be Gander Mountain.
I should have noted, they expect to employ 25 people.
Yeah, but it sounds like a really important service. Thank you. I yield.
Any other questions from the council? Okay, seeing or hearing none, we need to, at this, Councilperson Elliott, do you have a question?
Yes, Mr. President, there's no further discussion. I move that we vote to vote on this action.
Second.
You seconded that?
Martha.
Okay, I move, it's been moved by Councilperson Elliott, seconded by Councilperson Crossen, that we vote to take action on Special Ordinance 11. Roll call.
Councilperson Aller.
Yes.
Councilperson Bowland.
Yes.
Councilperson Crossen.
Yes.
Councilperson Devon.
Yes.
Councilperson Elliott.
Yes.
Councilperson Garrison.
Yes.
Councilperson Loudermilk.
Yes.
Councilperson Nation.
Yes.
Councilperson Azar.
Yes.
That's nine yes.
Okay, do I have, it's been, we're vote to take action on Special Ordinance 11. Do I have a vote for approval? Do I have a vote for approval? Counselperson Elliott.
Yes, Mr. President, I move that we accept Special Ordinance 11, 2020 as presented.
Second.
Been moved by Counselperson Elliott, seconded by Counselperson Crossen, that we approve Special Ordinance 11 as presented. Roll call.
Counselperson Aller.
Yes.
Counselperson Bowland.
Yes.
Counselperson Crossen.
Yes.
Counselperson DeBon.
Yes.
Counselperson Elliott.
Yes.
Counselperson Garrison.
Yes.
Counselperson Lautermilke.
Yes.
Counselperson Nation.
Yes.
Counselperson Azar.
Yes.
That's nine yes.
Special Ordinance 11 is approved. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Now going, we don't have any other business, correct?
That is it, believe it or not.
Okay. Before we adjourn, Counselperson Elliott, do you have a question?
No, I have, I just have one comment. There was a five-page doc, five-page document we received earlier today about Special Ordinance 11, 2020. I encourage all council members to read page four of that. It's a great story about this, that project.
All right, thank you. Prior to Counselperson Nation making motion to adjourn, we're going to talk about the next several meetings. The next meeting will be held, again electronically, on September 10th. There will not be any, that's the special.
There's three meetings.
There's three meetings on September 10th. The first one is a public hearing on the budget, correct?
That is correct, and the council members will be appearing by Zoom.
Okay, and there's no council discussion at this time?
Correct.
This will be for public comment. We are going to allow the public to attend one at a time.
In the courtroom.
In the courtroom, and at that time, we will ask them if they have questions, they may present them at that time, and then they are to leave the courtroom. We're not going to allow more than one at a time at the microphone.
And Mr. President, just commenting as well, they will be able to see the council. George and I are watching you on the monitors and they're two-sided monitors, so he will, we will be able to see you on Zoom, and so will the public while they're making the comments.
So everybody will be seeing everybody.
And you will be able to, yeah, and you will be able to see the public as they make their comments as well.
Okay, any other questions on that? And then the third meeting will be our regular meeting.
And then the second meeting.
Second meeting is the CF.
The one on Gartland Foundry and Harrison Manufacturing.
Okay, did everybody get that? Okay. Now, going to the special meetings for the budget.
Discussion between the mayor controller and the council.
Discussion between all of us, the public comment will not be allowed. I am going to leave this up to the pleasure of the council. If you wish to come here and do it in the courtroom, we will be more than happy to do that. If you would like to continue with the electronic, that is going to be, I will do whatever the will of the majority of the council wants to do, and that would be on this 22nd and 23rd of September and the 10th, or I'm sorry, and the 1st of October. What is the, can I have some discussion as to pros, cons? If you'd rather not, remember the governor has extended his public health emergency until the, almost the end of September, and we anticipate that he may go farther than that. Counselperson Nation.
I'm willing to listen to anything anybody wants to say about this, but can we make a decision on it at next week's meeting, or do you have to know now?
We can.
We can.
We can.
It was to start the discussion.
I just want you to think about it.
Sure.
Okay? And again, it's going to be the will of the majority. Whatever the majority decides is fine with, with me. I didn't want to make that decision on my own. Counselperson Elliott? I'm sorry, did you yield, Counselperson Nation?
I yield, yeah.
Counselperson Elliott?
Yeah, I've, I've thought about it, and it'll be my preference to meet in person.
Okay. I would, I would encourage you all to think about this at the next meeting. Counselperson Aller, go ahead.
I second Earl.
Okay. All right, let's not, at this point in time, I would like to, I think, going by what Counselperson Nation said, think about it, and at the next meeting on the 10th, that will be an electronic meeting, at that point in time, we can make the decision and majority rules. Does that sound fair to everybody?
Yes.
Okay. All righty, with that said, Counselperson Nation, you're on.
Wait a minute, can I, can I make a comment?
Yes, Counselperson Garrison, sorry.
I just want to let you know that I found out today that I will be at a board meeting next Thursday. I'm 90% sure, so I won't be here. So I don't know if I can vote today, but I, I am, I'm okay with a public meeting. I'm assuming Earl needs some time to, to show some things and talk a little bit more. So I'm supportive of that if you want to take my count now. Sorry, I'm probably going to miss the public comment on the budget. I'd like to hear that when we, when we do have people show up, so I'll, I'll try and catch this on YouTube or read the paper, and Michelle will let you know for sure if I'm out.
Thank you.
Thank you for letting us know. Appreciate it. Anyone else have anything to say?
Yeah. This is, yes, thank you. I, I don't have real strong feelings either way on Zoom or not Zoom, but I just wanted to check to make sure we'd be able to distance in this courtroom and still meet there.
Oh, that's the fun we've had with my office and IT, working on the technology to distance you. So the plan is if at any point the council comes back, you guys will be six feet apart.
Okay.